Foxport Town Council meeting for Thursday, July twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, Roll College.
Councilor Easton?
Here.
Councilor Morrison is absent. Deputy Mayor Bissonnet is absent. Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilor Armstrong?
Here.
And Mr. Bishop?
Here.
And Councilor Rankin?
Here.
And freest presentation of town council recognitions. We don't have any out of four. Consider minutes of previous meetings. We have minutes from seven thirteen twenty twenty-three. How the council like to proceed?
Motion group.
Second.
Posed in favor? Opposed? Item five is receive a review correspondence. There is none. Item six is ordinances to consider or introduce. There is none. Item seven is discussion items. First is request for contract zone for solar farm in Lawson, referred from Regulatory Review Committee for discussion. This was, was it last week?
Mm-hmm.
Last meeting.
Last meeting.
Yep. And what was the reason that we, would you?
Because the con- uh, the discussion was our contract zoning, right, and we've kind of jumped a little bit into whether we should track ordinance.
Right.
I was.
The end of the dis- I'm sorry.
Don't go ahead.
The end of the discussion was whether or not you should be considering contract zoning for these projects, or you should do an ordinance, a s- an ordinance.
Right.
Regulating solar in whatever zones, the conditions that you would do that in. That was where the.
That's what discussion is, because we run out of time.
Was, that come to the council with that.
In my initial thought, at the last meeting was to do it case by case, to do the contract zoning, but when I think about it, I think the ordinance across the board is the better way to go. My opinion.
That'd be my opinion.
I agree.
I like the case by case scenario, to be honest with you. I feel like that's what a contract zone is there for, and every chunk of land is going to be different. Everyone's needs are going to be different, and there's different scenarios with. With different zones, and even with an ordinance, I feel like we're still going to run into that one little thing that could change it all, so I like the idea of the contract zone.
Um. Yeah, I, I'm sort of torn that, between both of them. Um, the process is there now for us to do that. I think what our discussion was the last time, if we do it this way, is it just going to open it up and we're going to be there without an ordinance?
Well, and we did turn down one that.
Right.
Would seem on its face to be similar, you know, as far as not visible.
Right.
Okay.
So what am I hearing? I don't know what I'm hearing. I'm going to hear from you. I'm sure that will give some clarity for us.
Or might it, it's the case.
Or might it even more.
It might, might it more. Um, I just want to point out, um, that if we go the ordinance route, first of all, that's going to take some time. Second of all, there's no guarantee that the property in question here, lands, will be in one of the zones that ends up being permitted to. To end up having solar. And the reason I say that is because her property currently is in commercial one, and there's a fairly large chunk of land there that abuts the residential growth district. And logically, that, that area makes good sense for, for housing and stuff. Not her property per se, but that zone. So if we changed that whole zone, saying it could be solar, you stand the chance of that entire area being solar then, and. You would, we would have no way of saying no, because once you say that whole zone is good for it, it's good for it. So. Then you run into the other, could we change her property to a different zone? You're getting into that same area of, of the contract solar.
Correct.
My two cents.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And I guess to your point, Luke, I mean, if we did that, um, if we did contract zoning and allowed it there, we still would have the same problem in an area for growth, correct?
Yes, but you have, if you do it on a case by case, of course, then you have to qualify why you allowed it, so that the next person that asks. On the next piece of the land over, and you say, we allowed it there, but we're not going to allow it here, you have to have a reason.
Can you have contract zoning specific to solar, you know, with parameters around that, or is it?
Well, I would disagree though, too. I don't think we need to have a reason. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't think we need to explain it. Each, each vote, I think, to Steve's point stands on its own. Um, and, and when you have the discussion, um, like, like the last piece up here, um, the argument could have been made that, no, that's. There are other uses for that piece of property.
And there was a, a butter contention there, too.
Yeah, I would argue that, that it could be for any piece. Um. I, I'm not arguing, I'm just.
No, not at all. That was just my two cents.
Yeah, no, no. I think part of it comes down to, um, you know, there, there are times when, when we have to make a decision as a council, um, based on the rules that we have, and. And I don't know if it's fair to us or to other councils going forward, just to change rules to fit here, because in three months, you could be back here trying to change again, or something else, just to try to fit it. Um, we worked pretty hard on trying to get these things set up when we did, and, you know. I think it's incumbent upon us to make a decision, one may another, based on the rules that we have, and if it falls where, um, everybody has a vote. And to vote on it that way. But if we keep changing the rules.
Well, I think, you know, some things have changed over time. Solar's not what it, it's not all in an industrial zone. You know, it's power generation is the way we have it classified, and it's not all in an industrial zone, so. You know, I think that's why it's worth another look at where we permit it and what would be liable to, to understand, but.
By changing what the definition of that power to include solar?
To make it fit into some other places, because right now, I mean, we turned it down abutting industrial, which.
Mm.
And to the best of my knowledge, we don't have any contention on this project for butters or anything, you think?
We haven't notified any of us.
The, the, the planning board hasn't heard this.
Okay.
Correct?
Correct.
I was looking for Luke.
It just keeps going through my head. Look, let's do the ordinance, but do contracts on. Because Steve's point is the way I started in the beginning, if there is no situation is going to be the same on this, on this issue.
The only thing.
But I do think we do need an ordinance of some sort.
The only thing that the council has to be aware of in its decision making, that there's an appeals process that goes all the way to court for pretty much everything you do. And your decisions can't be arbitrary and capricious and be defensible in court, so. So there is some necessity in granting certain things that you have reasons that you point to that you did it, as opposed to. Not being that explanatory, because if it gets to a litigated point, you need to. Be able to defend the action for one or not for another one.
Well, and I think that makes the argument of, if you, if you do contract zones, then you're picking and choosing it, it's, it's less defensible, I think, than if it's already written down to be able to say, no, this zone is not zoned for that. So I think to Mark's point, do we look at the zoning itself, and is that, I think that's where.
Yeah, because I could see this last group that came forward saying, you said no to us, I mean, how do you defend in that?
Yeah, there are several communities that don't even have zoning.
Right.
That let you do whatever you want with your own property as well.
And sometimes no, no rules are easier than rules.
Right. Yeah. Exactly.
Maybe. Um. Still, I, I still don't know what I'm hearing.
I like the idea of the contract zone. That's what you're hearing from me.
Sure. I can have you come up and, and tell me who you are, please, and where you're from.
Right. Peter Fitzgerald from Bucksport. Uh, what zone is solar allowed in right now?
Industrial.
Industrial.
Okay.
I mean, except for on your whole, but for generation, you know, power generation is industrial.
It's still classified under power generation.
That's.
Like the olden days, if it was coal or.
Power plant.
But if anyone wants solar on their own home, that they're not generating power beyond their boundaries, there, there's no limitation. Any zone will allowance that. It's only. For solar that goes beyond the needs of the property on which it's located.
If someone puts solar on their home, do you actually have a way of knowing if they're using it anywhere else?
Well, the, the commercial portion of that is the issue, meaning that, you know, are you sharing it with your neighbors or something? Is that what you're asking?
Oh, which is.
People, entities that, solar companies that invest, that are selling net energy credits and those kind of things, are the ones that are. The commercial solar that the council is talking about regulating, not residential, some, on somebody's house, solar.
Right, uh, I'm just, was just thinking, the net energy billing can be used for residential, for multiple locations also. So, I, I know, I know that's not what you're, you're talking about, though.
The, the, the ones that the council is talking about are the, the projects, um, either the less than five meg ones, or the one to two meg ones that are. Have just been restricted by the state, um, where the, they have to be constructed by twelve thirty-one twenty-four in order to be able to. Um, sell the same market, the same kind of credits that were prior to that. Because we, when we discussed this at the last Regulatory Review Committee meeting, the discussion was whether this project, even if it were permitted. Uh, if the council did a contract zone and all that, since they hadn't yet applied to the planning board and had not yet applied to DEP for any permitting. Whether that process and construction would get them in under the twelve thirty-one twenty-four deadline. The person I believe at the meeting indicated he thought that the PUC had, um, the leeway to extend that or to modify that deadline. Um, I called the PUC today to ask that question, and they couldn't immediately answer it, but are supposed to respond when they do. So that's, that's the type that they're talking about, the ones that are covering acres of property and, um. Are not geared to an individual residential installation.
All right, yeah. I'm an electrical engineer, and I work on, uh, interconnection projects, so, uh, I would not expect the PUC to move that date. Um.
Neither would we.
I've served on a number of state boards and still do. That was my question, if the legislature establishes a date, I'm, I was confused as to how anyone else could change that date. I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, sometimes it just depe- depends on how the legislation is written, if it allows for, uh, exceptions or modifications based on circumstances.
Yep.
There have definitely been a lot of projects that have been caught in the cluster studies that have had two-year delays that they didn't see coming, so. So you said that the last one was next, adjacent to an industrial zone?
Yeah, it was, uh, adjacent to the landfill.
Okay.
Up on the river, but in behind, where the nursery is to be years and years ago.
Okay. And this one's not adjacent to one?
No, this, the project at hand is, uh, behind Walgreens, more or less.
Okay.
In that scenario.
Between Walgreens and the farmhouse, that big field.
Back of that field.
Behind that field.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to acknowledge that on the air. Greg Rocher, New Leaf Energy. Um, yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify one point before, I think. The property is located in commercial two zone. I'm not sure if that makes it any different than commercial one. Um, and to speak to the PUC deadline, um. What we would pursue as a, you know, a, an extra protection for the project would be a good cause exemption with the PUC. And those are handled on a case by case basis. We certainly don't expect the PUC to extend that deadline for the entire industry, um, only for special exceptions. Um, there has been one approval. Um, the details may not be exactly the same, um, but a project got approval for a good cause exemption. Um, due to, uh, cluster study delays, um, whi- which this gentleman referenced. Um, this project also experienced really long cluster study delays. Um, that's why we think there's a chance that we get a good cause exemption, but also just wanted to clarify that. Um, we would certainly, um, have the project on the fast track to, to finish construction by the end of twenty twenty-four. Um, if we're given that chance. Um, the, the DEP permitting is not expected to be a long process for this project. Happy to, you know, discuss the project details further, if anybody would like to. Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I, I sort of follow with Steve with contract zoning. Um, again. And I'm going to say, I'm going to call it like it is. If this wasn't a person that owned a farm that had been there two hundred years, what would be happening in this discussion? I mean, that, that's kind of what rolls into the last, the last piece of property that we looked at was a corporation that came in and. Well, you know, call it what it is, there was, there was.
Can we do that?
No, I didn't say, I don't know if we can do that. I'm just telling you, I'm, I'm being honest about it. I'm being honest about what, what the thought process, I think, people are going through, and that, and that's human nature. I mean, you know, we're going to look at it as. This is somebody's family thing that they're trying to make some money off of, that has been there for two hundred years, as we heard. The other one was a corporation. And a- again, I think we have to stand and say, are we going to do contract zoning, or are we not? If we are, then again. You, you've got to try to take those, those, um, biases out, or, or, I don't know if bias is the right word, but the, uh. The emotion out of it.
Sure.
Um, and, and, and look at it on its face, and I think that's tough to do, but I think that's kind of what we're up here doing. And, or you change, or you change the ordinance and sort of make it easy, and it goes away. Um, but again, as I said before in the last one. We, we've set up, we've set up the ordinances, and we've set up the zones, I think, according to what we think the town was looking for when we did that. And I think it's incumbent upon us to try to keep those that way. And I think we've talked about also, if we do this once, we're going to be chasing these, and, and then, to your point, where are we going to stop being answered? So, it, it's, it's a tough decision to, if you go back and look at all the zoning and say, now we're going to move this line to here. Or are we going to change what solar is?
I, that would be my thought, is can we change what solar is? Because solar isn't, I mean, where it's put and how it's placed is like a, a power plant from the. That's what it seems today, and, and it isn't that anymore.
And, and, and again, I would argue that I don't want to drive along Route One here.
But then we can make an ordinance that addresses, you know, not visible, or whatever those kind of.
And, and, and that's what I'm saying, yeah, so.
I think that's a big piece for me. I, I just, I'm, I'm not for solar panels. I'm just not. I'm not for them. I don't like, like the way they look. I don't like, I don't think that they're as environmentally friendly as people say they are. And so I struggle with that, and, and a lot of it has to do with, you know, it is a farm, it's our family land, and we're telling her she can't do something with that, so that's, that's the hard part for me, but I, I'm really not a fan of solar panels and.
I, I, contract zoning is, is, I keep, is what I keep going back to, because you, you both have points that were in my head right from the beginning, is. All these situations are different, but I do think, and Mike's point is, I do think we need to address. Solar as an energy solar, and not just solar, this.
Power zone.
This.
Wind towers.
Any of that.
You know, any, I mean, and that's where you've got to figure, I think this is more of a discussion than just today.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
So I. Which doesn't help that, that project, because I mean, we, we.
No.
Scanned down the road for six months, and all of a sudden, those, those dates start peeping up, because.
Right.
They're looking for an answer.
And this is what's in front of us right now, is this project for this solar.
And I, and again, I think the decision needs to be made, are, are we going to answer this one on its face, or are we going to, this is raise the question, do we need to look at our whole process and our whole ordinance system? To answer this one question.
I would take this one at face value for what it is, as its own situation.
So is your, what's your opinion about, are we going to have these other people coming back?
I, I, I don't, they're, they've purchased another lot, they're, they're proceeding with a different project that's already permitted. They bought inside the industrial zone and are doing that. I, I don't think that that's going to be an issue, what you would, might be, and, and I. Due to the limitations that the, the state has now put on some of these projects, I'm not sure, um. And to be honest, the amount of space left in our substation, which is very, very small, um, I, I don't know how much more could be sustained. It doesn't mean people won't want to. Doesn't mean that deeper pockets couldn't fund what's necessary to upgrade substations in order to take more capacity. Which is what gets factored into these projects, you know, that the last one in is kind of lucky, because they're not paying for the rest of the. Of what's necessary for that substation to then be able to take more. Um. I think some of the legislative processes ratcheted some of this back, because. People's concern that every community means will look like outside of Augusta does right now, which is.
For.
Was, it, it might be environmentally positive, but it was not located in such a way as to. Inspire people to think it was a good idea. Um, I, I think that whatever you do with this project, you do, but. I, I would think that the whole, where does energy belong, you know, with it, when the town did energy, it was, it was the power plant at the mill, that's. That was it, and these other things have come along since, and more are, these fuel cells that weren't okay and may not be okay, will eventually be okay, and where are those going to go? Um. So you deal with this application as it is, understanding that it, it is, uh. It may engender an, another property owner to say the same thing to you in another section of the community, that has to be. Located near three phases, it's, it needs a lot of stuff in order to be able to move forward, so it's not like every place in town could just come in tomorrow and said, say, I want to put a solar farm here, because. The whole process to it is to.
Well, and I think that's what we need to look at. I mean, when, when, in my opinion, when we're talking about contract zoning, we're changing the zoning for a specific reason. As we found, there are other places you can do this. You know, you can go put a solar farm someplace else, the, the folks over there doing that found a little place that was properly zoned and everything else. I come back to, this is a person who has a fire and was having an opportunity, and I think that's an internal struggle. I don't want to speak for anybody, but I honestly think that's what we're looking at. Um, I said right from the start, and, and, you know, for things like this, for where we're at, I'm, I'm really not. I, I don't know if I would vote for the contract zone for this purpose. Um, I don't think it fits, there, there are other places to do this. Um, it may not be on her property, but there are a lot of other places where you may be able to put solar panels that are zoned properly in town, or not in town. And I think that's a decision we have to make, because as a council, do we want to go down that road of having people come forward and start moving this encroaching in? Um, that's what I look at, does this start encroaching in on, on other pieces, or, or encroaching out, I guess, to where we're at, so. But.
Why don't we table it until we have a full council, so we can hear from Jim and Paul about it as well? Does that work?
Well, I don't know if we've got a decision here.
No, I, I mean, no decision, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be here next time. You guys kind of know where I stand, but if you push this, I, I think. She came forward at the last meeting, looking for an answer. Um, I think they were here the last time, and I don't know if we got a full answer. We kind of pushed it from the, who was on the Regulatory Review with you?
Me, Sal, Paul and Jim.
Paul and Jim, I think, yeah.
So they really couldn't come up with a decision, because that's why you get pushed to.
The, and the other thing was that they felt that it, because of the complexity, that the whole council really needs to, to be making the decision, not a subcommittee. That's, was the other.
Well, and even today, we could do a vote and we could go, you know, to nowhere, and there could, so we could table it for a full council.
It, there's no resolve on here.
Right, right. So that's what I'm getting, yeah. There's not, there's no resolve to make a decision, so, you know.
You can tell me to put a resolve on the next, one way or another, and that would, I'm hoping that since the tenth, I don't have a quorum, that. There's enough of you that can meet on the third, so that we can set a mill rate and refer the two items that need to go to referendum. Um, which would mean meeting next week, but it, this would also, if you put this on as a resolve, would give them a decision by August third.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, thanks.
But I don't know how mu- how many bodies I have, but.
I will be here next, I'm not available next Thursday, but.
How about, and you're not available the following day?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we have at least. I, I know Jim plans on being back, he's just had an accident. Paul, I think, is out next time, too, but that.
Oh, Paul was available next time.
He is available, okay, so we're six.
I was the only, I was the only one that was going to be gone on the tenth, and.
Well, now we've got four down.
It's the third we're talking, we got one, two, and, yeah, four. Oh, yeah. On the third, yeah.
On the fo- on the tenth, we're down four.
Oh, okay, all right, so that did change from the last time.
So this time, it, I've been asking for the third, which is next week, which I think it looks like it's just you that will be.
Okay. All right, you guys want to push it for next Thursday then, and you guys can make a decision and at least talk about it some more, some more, but you know where I stand, I guess.
Yep.
So, that will be all at least.
I'd, I'd like to hear their input on ordinance or contract, or bo- I'm still.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Both.
All right.
Do you want a resolve that reflects either both decisions, and you can pick one?
Let's probably save this.
Is that?
Yes.
Because if you're going to make a decision at the next meeting, there needs to be a resolve available.
That would, that would make sense, that way it's.
Is that, there's one of each kind?
You okay with that?
Yeah, I am, I am, I mean, you guys know where I stand, so.
Okay.
I don't want to influence anything, but you know where I'm at. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Um, next item is swings for the location on the waterfront, preferred from the Infrastructure Committee. Man, you guys refer a lot of stuff.
This was a positive thing.
Yes, I know. Thank you. Um, what was the reason for your proposal?
I don't remember.
This is the swings. No, this was to, to have the council, um, ask for a resolve to approve the swing.
Oh, sure. Everybody's okay with the swings, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
So you want a resolve for this, to move forward with the swing?
And may as well put it on, may as well put it on the third, then. Everybody okay with the third?
Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Again, I'll, yeah. Um, and then we have Services Committee update.
Yep, uh, we had one person for Cemetery Committee, Stephen St. Peter, and. I had a motion to approve.
Okay, and we've got that coming up here, and another couple, uh, items, so. All right. And when did you want to talk about this, under items?
It's under my room manager.
Oh, okay, okay. Um, agenda items, resolve twenty twenty-four dash zero eight to approve the contract changes to the fire EMS contract. Effective nine one twenty twenty-three. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions?
This, the la- the lang- this is just the language to implement the resolve from last time. It addresses schedule wages and the benefit reductions as a result of that. Those are the only three items that are addressed, um, that you approved, or that are addressed in contract changes.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next is resolve twenty twenty-four dash zero nine to approve the sewer commitment for April first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three quarter. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second. Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes?
Um, an item to add to the agenda that's not on the agenda, which is, um, our code officer has presented you with bid results from the demolition of, um.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
If you would add that to the agenda, so that we can award that.
Under a resolve here?
Yes.
Okay, uh, take a motion to take an item not on the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? So we have a, um, bid process for demolition and cleanup, um, from an RFP for cleanup of 1861 State Route 46, map 21 Lot 37. Um, the RFP went out, and has work to be completed by August 31st of this year. Uh, four bids, um, I'll just read down through the bids, and we can make a decision, I assume. Uh, Hardscrabble Stone and Landscape, sixty-three thousand, Justin Clapper, thirty-four thousand five hundred, D M and J Waste, twenty-eight thousand, Gardner Concrete, twenty-one thousand. My assumption is to go with a low bid of Gardner Concrete for twenty-one thousand.
Where are they based at?
Handen, Bangor, Herman, that, it's, well, they, once upon a time, they were in Handen, then I think they went to Herman, yeah.
And these are all same work?
It's based off the RFP, the scope of work and, and.
Full cleanup.
Real, just real quick, um, removal of structures on the property, if you include any foundations, removal of all trash and debris on the property, removal of all vehicles and campus from the property, removal of any other items remaining on the property that are not natural, locate subsurface wastewater tank, pump out and fill in or crush, locate and mark well location, grade and stabilize the site with seed and hay or equivalent. All demolished materials must be properly disposed of in a legal manner. Work is to be completed by August 31st, 2023. So, um, we have a four bids, um, recommendation to take a little bit from Ga- Gardner Concrete. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Um, next are resignation appointments, assignments, and elections. First, we have a resignation panel patrol officer, Allison Corbo Moore. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Next is resignation dispatcher, Elizabeth McCann. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next is services committee cemetery committee appointment. Uh, we have the nomination of Steve, Stephen St. Peter to the cemetery committee. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Congratulations, Steve, now you're on the cemetery committee. Um, item 10 is approval of quit claims, discharges, and deeds. Then, town manager report.
Yes, um, you have my report, but you all also have an item I'd like to add, um, which is, at the last meeting, you gave me authority to negotiate with someone, with a, some people who had put in an offer on the property at five mountain olive heights. And, um, they had made an offer, I made a counter offer based on, um, eliminating sewer charges, because there, there were bil- items bailed during that time, but they were not, the water wasn't on. It was just because the pipe was there, that's what our ordinance says, and eliminating, um, fees and interest from it. To leave the outstanding property taxes, um, the amount that we discussed for the property owner to gain acceptance and a sign-off on the, so that a new owner could get, uh, a warranty deed rather than wait five years, um, which happens without a sign-off, and property ta- and the demolition cost that we incurred to, um, take down what was there and get that cleaned up. So my counter offer was twenty-five. Um, the, the, the people that made the offer asked for an opportunity to discuss this directly with the council, as opposed to with just me. I believe the jealousons are here this evening. Um, you've seen their, their letter that they wrote, and, um, so that, it's part of my manager's report, because it wasn't on, the agenda was gone, and he did this. So this gives them an opportunity to address you, um, and then I can finish my manager's report, if that's okay with process line?
Okay with everybody?
Yep.
Got my, so who's, who's here?
Mr. and Mrs. Jellison.
So you wanna come up here real, I just got a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
You understand, um, that if, if we look at your bid and accept your bid, that there may be a process where you can't get signed off? Did you understand that process?
Well, I thought that was gonna be the town's issue. I thought that's what Susan explained to me, that, you know, they would make sure it happened if she wouldn't sign off. Is that correct, or am I?
The, the reason that we were getting the sign-off was that a portion of the proceeds from the sale of the property would go to her. Not, not a large portion, but, um, enough to ensure that, that, the, the primary cost in, that we've identified is the thirteen thousand four hundred and change that cost us to take it down and have it demoed, and the, uh, six thousand and change that is property tax, and then, um, a few thousand for the former property owner. It was the, what's involved there, and, and i- if we reduce it to twenty-one, something comes off the table. Either the taxes don't get cleared, or the total cost of demolition doesn't get cleared, or the amount discussed for the former property owner doesn't get. Something has to move in order to accept, twenty-five thousand is the amount that covers all of that. If we reduce that, which the council has every right to do, then the, I just need to know what piece of that amount. You either wanna abate taxes, or you wanna not cover the cost of demolition, or.
And, you know, just to point a fact that if Gail doesn't sign off, you're not able to get a mortgage for enough, a period of years.
Five.
You can't get a, you can't get what?
You can't get a mortgage on it, because you can't get title insurance.
Which is why we were setting this up this way, so that whoever did, wouldn't face that hurdle. We want that lot to be developed, it's a, it's a.
So, so to that end, if we want it to be developed, um, we have an offer. Y'all, it is, I think, if, if we're going, if, if, if part of this is getting a sign-off from the previous owner, as a town, we can eat the taxes, we can abate the taxes, we can take care of the demolition piece. That, again, it's already, it's already happened. Um, we paid for it, and we're done, we're just trying to reimburse and fill the coffers. Or do we just wanna sell this thing, get off from under it, and be done with it? Personally, I'm ready to sell it. I, I hate being in the property business, and, and selling of, of, as, as a town. Um, we have an offer, um, we, we've tried to go the other route to get full, full money. Um, and if the council is okay, I would be, I think what Sue was asking for, are we okay to accept that and figure out how we fill in the holes?
And this is our only strongest bid over a period of what time?
The, we put it out twice with a minimum bid of thirty-one thousand dollars, which included sewer and all interest in this piece. Um, we haven't put it out since that time. Um, uh, the jealousons came forward with an offer unsolicited. Um, based on their own family stuff that they were looking to do, and made that offer. And that's why I asked the council last week if you were okay with me doing that, rather than putting it out again with a, with a minimum, or doing something in terms of, um, other things. I, I, I did, I looked today to see what vacant lots in town, in-town vacant lots that had been handled by realtors in the last year had gone for, and though, that ranged from thirty to forty-five thousand dollars, based on a point-two acre lot, or a point-three-seven acre lot, and a point-five acre lot. So, that, we've never, we didn't go the real estate agent route and do all that kind of thing, we just advertised, and we didn't, we didn't put it back out without a minimum, but, but, because we had done before exactly what we were, started to this time, which is someone came forward with an offer, they worked with me, and that was it.
How long ago was the first posting?
Two years ago.
Two, two years ago?
Yeah.
No, 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 it didn't come down until.
Not last year, last year.
Okay.
See, it just feels super.
Right, yeah.
Well, yeah, because it's been going on for.
Well, we would wanna know that we were gonna get a warranty deed. We don't wanna think we gotta wait five years.
I, and, and you're not gonna have to, if we're gonna do this, that, we're, the town, I'm asking, you know, I'm okay with the town eating part of it to make whoever we give this to whole on, on their end by satisfying what we've said we're gonna satisfy.
Yeah, I, I agree with Tina, me too.
So, if everybody's okay with that, we'll have Sue finish up the negotiations and.
You just need to know what part that, that four thousand dollars comes from, whether it's the taxes or.
Try, try, in my opinion, it's the demolition, um, we, we can transfer the money to, it's, it's a, it's a paper thing.
Whatever they, they, I, I would rather the taxes stayed intact, that, those are.
Correct.
Committed.
Yeah, that's what I said.
We spent them years ago, we, it, I, if you're gonna abate something, it would be a portion of the.
And, 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 and going, and going forward, you know, um, we've got demolition costs on this other property that we're paying for now. Um, I think as a council, we'd better decide, how long do you wanna hang on this? So we just put it out as a no bid? You know, give us, give us, everybody can put in an offer, whatever it is, and we gotta realize that we're gonna get rid of this property, even though it may cost us a little bit to do that, we can't try to be whole, in my opinion, trying to be whole. We, we've sat over here for this, on this piece over here, trying to be whole for a long time, and ended up giving that away for, you know, um, hopefully with some good development coming, so. If everybody's okay, we'll have Sue work with, um, Ms. Jellison and, and work those numbers, so.
With those numbers?
Yep.
I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I still have to report. Um, so, many thanks to my town office staff that coordinated and carried out the many facets that combined to make the Bay Festival on July 22nd, so very successful. And thanks as well for the efforts of other town departments and personnel to support that project. Decisions made by the group to have as many components as possible of the festival to be at no cost, allowed many to really enjoy what was a very family-oriented day. Um, I can't speak highly enough of the amount of planning and time and effort that, that my staff put in on their own time, um, meeting to, to do this work, and I, they're already getting, um, offers from people who wanna be involved in next year's, um, festival, um, music, food, et cetera. It was, it was pretty amazing. If you weren't, I, I was there to volunteer on that day, but it, it was just pretty amazing. I will, the, the, the people coming from the parade down over, I likened to The Lion King when the antelopes come down over there. That's what it looked like, as the parade went by, the antelopes came down, to things, it was pretty awesome. And I think we've answered this, um, and I'm now aware that four councils will not be available for August 10th, and we have the animal shelter and the downtown project that need to be sent out for public hearing at our second meeting in August, and the mill rate, which also needs to be set, so I'm asking if we can have a meeting, oh, and there's bids on retaining walls, I believe, that would also, by the 3rd.
So that's the, that's the end of August?
The end of August? Well, we've got something that's the beginning of August.
Spirit of America.
I, yes, Spirit of America is the first one. So, anyway, that would, hopefully we can meet on the 3rd at seven o'clock. Um, we were notified by Senator Collins' office that our dock project had moved along in the process from the appropriations committee to the full senate. While there are no guarantees to ultimate success, we are still in the game, while many others are not. Um, the Route 46 maintenance contract is up for renewal. Linfer has had it for the past four years and done a good job with it. Is there an objection to me bringing forward a renewal of that contract, or do you want it to go out for bid? That's a question for you to think about. And then finally, a person from the state came to check our traffic light out today in response to traffic backups primarily on Saturdays. Well, he informed us, and we really already knew, traffic counts are way up this year, and in particular on routes that access MDI. He also indicated that there's an issue with the timing and possibly the radar system. A technician will be coming out either tomorrow or Saturday to look at remedying that. So, while it won't mean that there's no line on Saturday, if it's, if it's repaired, the timing related to the left turning arrow, um, should be corrected, so that that's not sitting there for thirty seconds when there's no cars, so.
So that's not the town's fault, 'cause that's what we've been.
Not to my knowledge. We don't maintain it.
I, I get that, I've been trying to pass that along.
We call and tell people who maintain it, but, but. So Route 46 maintenance, do you want me to put that out to bid? Do you want me to bring forward a renewal?
I, I, personally, like I said the last time, I like to see things brought to bid, just to see what there is out there for, like we were talking about with the trash.
Just keep it competitive.
Keep it competitive, keep everybody, um, to see what there is out there. Not, not saying, and, and those of us that live on 46.
They're, they're doing a good job, but.
Happy with the thing, but I still think that, as, as a community, I think we're, we're, we should put it out there, just to see what we have.
Agreed.
Yep, agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 12 is public hearings. Um, we have a couple that are not on the agenda, I'll get to in a second. First is a public hearing for the abandonment of unconstructed portions of Second Street. You're gonna walk me through this one, so we need to have a public hearing on that, to just, questions? A normal public hearing?
Yeah.
Thank you. Open a public hearing for abandonment of unconstructed portions of Second Street. Um, comments? I think we've had, uh, all the parties involved here, and hopefully this one seems pretty amicable, and what we, what we hope.
There was a considerable amount of information that our code enforcement officer provided to me that, that Second Street's had a history of abandonment, shall we say, over time, a piece here and a piece there. Um, if, if anything, we're, we're now doing it twice, because it appears that some may have been done a long time ago, but it's not clear enough that it's been reflected on mapping. So we, this action, if you choose to take it, would.
Clear it up.
Clear that out.
Any other questions? From the public? Patrol that uncontested street, chief? Close the public hearing? Uh, so we have, uh, um, take a motion to, uh, to take the abandonment of uncontested Second Street.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Bucksport Vendor Bender Festival License. Bucksport Bay Business Toll License, second and fourth Mondays of every month. How would the coun- whoop?
Excuse me, just one second, um, Mrs. Doty is not able to be here this evening, and said if there were questions that we could call, there were some information, there was some information sent out with recommendations from department heads in regard to these that, um, were, resulted in it not being recommended to be done exactly the same way it had been requested, is that?
I have conditional approval, is how I have it marked, so, and then in the comments, um, there's a couple of things in there, and I guess I don't know where to go. We have conditional approval, but they're really not questions, that, that, the comments, or maybe Luke can explain that a little bit better, because I was kinda, I just wanted to make sure that we're under. that, that the comments, so maybe Luke can explain that a little bit better, because I was kinda, I just wanted to make sure that we're understanding, because, uh, uh, fire says we need further discussion of estimation of number of people expected for the event to properly staff if needed.
Right. That I can't answer, that's.
And I don't, I don't know, I don't know if she can answer that, can she, based on what she had for, uh?
Right. My recommendations were, since it says that it's like a farmer's market, to use the farmer's market parking lot, but.
The, the one by, by, by the post office?
Correct, but she said that that is not large enough for what she wants to do, um.
And she wants it where?
She wants to use the town dock and.
Marina.
Town dock parking lot and the, uh, marina parking lot, and I said, no, the marina parking lot is not to be used. Our ordinance is pretty clear, we wrote it that way last year, that we wouldn't shut that down between, I can't remember, June first and October first or something like that.
October first or something, right, yeah.
Did we just, didn't we just use it for the Bay Festival?
Yep, we did.
The, the.
We shouldn't have done that, and.
Well, the difference i- in this case is that we're talking about every, uh, two days.
A month.
A month, as opposed to one day a year, which is what happened. And the ordinance online wasn't the one that was current, that was.
Right. For next year's festival, we will have to either not use that parking lot or change the ordinance, because.
Contract zone?
I don't know, but.
When that ordinance came up, it was a hard no, we're not opening, we're not using the marina parking lot. And I remember saying, are you sure you wanna do that? Because there's gonna be a time that we're gonna need that parking lot, and nope, we're not using the parking lot.
But I think the reason that we put that in the ordinance was this exact situation.
Yes.
They wanna shut it down twice a month. And they're all, oh, well, we'll, we'll barricade, we'll let people in and out and stuff, and I get that they have good intentions, but those, those boat owners pay big money for those slips.
Agreed.
And we just can't do that, so.
I mean, can we, can we push, can we allow it, it's with a, like, conditionally?
Yes. That's what, that's what conditional approval is, that's why I checked that, so.
What about the town dock and the farmer's market if she needs that much room?
I mean, would the town dock be enough?
I would think so, but I don't know.
If she needs more room, I am not opposed to the farmer's market parking lot, but that's, she hasn't asked for that.
Give conditional approval for the town dock, and if she needs more, have discussion after the first one?
The, that means closing down that town dock parking lot two nights a month to nobody driving into it.
Correct.
Because that's.
But she said if there was a cruise ship, that she would move the barricades to let, you know, whatever, which is what our ordinance says, so.
Yeah, and these are the types of steps we're gonna have to take to see what kind of draw we, see if there's a lot of people.
And I think Rich checked, and there's only, only one date, at least this summer, where a cruise ship comes in, and it's the day of her event that they comes in that night. So, odds are it won't even be here before her event ends, so. Not really, not really an issue this summer, as far as the cruise ships, so.
I think we gotta see how it pans out here, right? We have no idea, and it sounds like nobody really knows.
Rich, Rich just stood up, Luke, you're really good.
Sorry, Luke, I'll, I'll help out a little bit, so, Arts Festival, we'll look at that. The Arts Festival starts at the town dock parking lot and typically comes down to the hotel, but we don't shut down the marina parking lot. Two cones are put at the end of the walkway on either way to cross through the marina parking lot, and patrons are able to walk across, and cars coming up or down know that patrons are coming because of cones. We could do something similar to that, we've always done that, that way. Or, instead of having people cross back and forth, they cross Route fifteen, if we don't wanna go that route, you can start at the town dock parking lot and go on the other side of the gazebo, there's all that land as well, so, there are alternatives. And like I said, the only time we've ever shut down the parking lots were for Bay Fest. When the Chamber did it, it was Bay Fest. And potentially, one year, the first year of the Arts Festival, I think Mama Baldacci's was in the, uh, marina parking lot. That was the one and only time, just because it was closed down, three days for Bay Fest, two days for Arts Fest, and the boaters, that was five days, and the boaters weren't very happy.
And there was a public safety concern from Public Safety Department, both staffing?
I spoke with Daisy Winchester today, and I know that Emma Miss Doty spoke today on the phone, and he indicated to me that they had all set.
One, one, one question's been raised to me about our waterfront and outside of, folks outside of the town using it, and you've got private property here that we're giving away as public, or, or the assumption is that it's all public. Or in fact, there is private property that goes down through there. And I see on our form, we have, you know, if it is private involving some of that where it may spill onto, um, are we asking them to go get written permission if so, is that, should that be attached to the, to this application? Now, I don't know if this one's gonna do it just because it's the town dock, but I'm looking at the, what you're talking about, Rich, is the whole length of the water, you know, for an Arts Festival, coming this way, um, there is private property, it, 'cause it's been asked of me, that the, the liability factor alone is, you know, if something happens, the town has said, well, yes, you, we've given you permission to do it there, but we really may not have permission to allow them to use that, that private property. I don't think, I don't think if, if folks ask, there would be an issue, but I think it needs to be something between a private landowner and, and whoever putting on the event.
Yes, and we've never, we've never done that before, and you bring up a very good point, because the walkway's a series of easements, so, usually on its side.
But the easements don't extend back as far.
That's the buildings, right, so, yes, so exactly, everything on that side from, uh, Lighthouse Arts Center down is, I believe, private.
I saw your hand up, so, I'll get to you this thing.
So, yeah, so, so you're right, we don't, and I think the one time I remember is ever doing anything with the private that I reme- recall, besides for the events Terry's been doing at the, um, the mill parking lot, was one year, Main Street Bucksport held a, um, a dinner at Bill Tomasco's former property on US Route one, and attached to that application, um, because it was an invitation to public. Yeah, but I don't think we made them do a private, they didn't have to fill out a form, but they had to fill out a form to use Bill Tomasco's because it was private property, but we've never had them any.
I, I just, I just, I just raised that because it's been raised to me.
It's a good question, we've never thought of it.
No, I haven't, yeah.
No? That's very good.
Hi, um, Doty, I'm gonna end, um, I've done the art show here in town, and I'm a professional crafter. And I don't know if this is just passing the buck on to the little guy, but a lot of artists have to have liability insurance to do shows. So, if my booth were, say, right next to or on the private property and something happened to someone who tripped in my booth, I would have insurance to cover that. So, it doesn't seem right to me personally that the coordinator wouldn't have insurance, they should have event insurance. I've coordinated shows, I had to get event insurance. But also, it could be like doubled up, because then the artist might also have insurance as well, so, there's just something to ponder.
No, a- a- and, and everybody does, but this is private property, and you're.
Yeah.
They never addressed it, right.
Yeah.
Your insurance is great for you, but we're allowing folks to use private property.
But then I could add to my insurance the town.
Not the town, the private owner.
For the event, yeah.
And, and that's what I'm asking, is we have on here contact?
Yeah.
Correct. We need to get those people in a room and have a conversation.
Yeah, because then the coordinator could add the private properties to their insurance for the event.
And, and I think that would, that would satisfy, I think, what you could get them into an economic, but. I think, I think that would, I think that would be well worth it, 'cause again, it's been, it's been raised to me. No, I, it's a valid point, I, I, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it. Okay.
The, the use of the waterfront is increasing.
It is.
And it's something that we
Like to continue.
are driving things to do.
Absolutely, right, yes.
So, if, if, if a property owner was used to an Arts Festival and Bay Fest, and, and now it's gonna be something that plus twice a month plus twice plus, I think that it, it would be a great idea to have.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So closely we are even sticking with our easements.
And, and that's, that's what was asked of me, it's not, the, not against it, just, right.
Not a complaint.
Have, have you guys thought of this yet?
Not at the time.
Right, and that's what I told him, I said, nope. I'm sure you have, though, thank you for that.
As far as this situation, though, past practice would be to compare it to the Arts Festival scenario, correct?
Well, the way I look at this is, this is pretty well restricted to the parking lot, is the way I'm reading this, right?
I think she intended to go down the walkway some, if she gets enough vendors.
Okay.
But we're saying no to the marina parking lot, correct, is that what?
To shutting it down, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I, like what Rich was saying, you know, doing, even like half that parking lot and then down behind the gazebo, that area, I know we run into the same, but if we did it in that section, it's, it's not affecting the marina, um, there'd be a little bit more foot traffic.
Plus, I think we, I think we own that anyway, don't we, going the other direction, right? Yeah. Right.
That's the spot for it, and.
And that's what, that was suggested also, is that going the other direction towards the mill is already hours anyway.
Yep.
Miss Doty would like a phone call.
Plus, there'll be swings down there soon.
Yeah. Swing festival.
Hello?
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 Is Terry there?
Sorry, there's no Terry here.
Thank you.
That was a wrong number.
That was gonna be, something was gonna be said that I didn't wanna go across.
That's all I got, too, thank you for that.
What do you have for a number, Rich?
Eight oh five, seven four eight, nine one three two.
Didn't, didn't go far enough.
I already forgot it.
It's not allowing.
Oh, nine one, eight oh one, yeah, nine one, eight oh five.
Hello?
Hi, got the wrong number?
I, I've got the wrong number, I gotta dial one first, um, so, you're on speakerphone, Terry.
Okay, so, I just wanted to make it clear that I did not want to shut down the marina at all. All I wanted to do was put some sort of, uh, barriers there, so the cars that didn't need to get to the marina didn't have to go down there. Uh, people that had, um, boats, we would monitor the entrance and let them through, so it wasn't gonna be totally closed down. I just wanna make that clear.
And Terry, have you thought about going in the other direction, back towards the mill instead?
Well, the only reason with that is that the, I think the spaces for the, um, the vendors get smaller, so, to the left is a little bit bigger, that's why. 'Cause it's typically a ten by ten space.
I think there's quite a lot of room going back towards the mill, um, that, honestly, I think there's more, and, and I don't know if you heard our conversation about private property?
I've heard a little bit of it, I couldn't really tell, it was kinda spinning out.
Yeah, but, um, the town owns all of that property going back towards the, the mill site, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't have an infringement on private property where we may have to get permissions and things like that, which has been raised as a concern, um, with anything that happens down on the waterfront, so. I think, I think folks are. Go ahead.
This would be from the gazebo to the right?
If you're, if you're looking at the water, yes.
Plus the town.
Plus the town dock.
Um, so, uh, the concern would be, is it just because of the marina? Is that what it is?
No, no, it's, it's, that, that, the, the property all the way down through there, there's been an issue that's been raised about private property infringement by anything that goes on down there.
Okay.
That's the best.
Persons that abut the walkway.
Yeah, people that abut the walkway, um, they're, 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 they've raised maybe some liability concerns with anything that goes on, um, festival vendor that we're, we're gonna look at, so, I think we're looking at an option if we go the other direction, um, from, from and including all of the town dock, going back towards the mill, um, you're gaining the same thing, you've still got, um, plenty of room down there to do all these things, I think that's something we've been looking at, so. I'm not gonna speak out of turn, but I think that is probably where we're leaning towards, um, starting.
So, I would be okay with that, that's fine.
At this point in time, Terry, it seems like this is the best way to make it happen.
And then that would take, that takes, that takes the marina rate out of it, and there's not, then don't have to worry about it.
Okay, that's fine, and, and, um, the Luke's recommendation for where the farmer's market, there's, uh, my, um, that would be too big for what they have.
Yeah, I think, I think you've got plenty of room to go the other direction anyway.
Okay, that's, that'd be fine.
Terry, I, I'm, I might be missing it, or it might have been said, but it says second and fourth Monday of each month. How, how many months are we you planning on doing that?
So, it's just, so this year will just be the, uh, second Monday of October, and then I would cut it off, and then, uh, hope to, um, do it again the following year.
Okay.
So, it'd be from now through October, Terry, through the beginning of October?
August thirteenth, um, would be the first one.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, bye bye.
So, motion approved, would be amended changes discussed, second. Any other questions, comments, that were, if you understand that, which is all what we talked about, so, Rich?
It makes sense.
Luke? All those in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Um, Music at the Marina, Bucksport Bay Business Coalition, September sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Again, there's an application. I think, from what I read from that, less infringement on the whole walkway, correct?
Yeah, the name is deceptive, it's not really the marina, it's the town dock.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And I spoke with Terry today to alleviate an issue, she needed lights off, and she'd have to work with her CMP, so she's just gonna switch where the stage is and where the movie is, so the movie will be where the electric vehicle charges are, and the stage will be where the dock is.
And, Chief, I saw one of the things you put, you know, this is going on until eleven o'clock. Are we, are we concerned with having things happen here past?
Stay awake.
Seven, seven o'clock. I'm just, I mean, you, you have bad coverage and you don't see any issues, other than just, we, we normally don't have things.
We've never done that during until eleven, so.
Right. Yep.
We have issues with the aggressive.
Okay. Very good. Is there a football game that night?
Which night, fourteen? It's first day, I will say.
No, no, no.
No, this is the other one, no.
Sixteen. No, September.
They got a victory day. September sixteenth is a Saturday, no.
Okay.
And the reason why it's eleven, Mr. Mayor, is because it typically doesn't get docked at that time, it's almost nine o'clock, so to give the movie two hours to play would wrap up.
Nine o'clock in September?
No, seven.
I'm gonna sit down now.
Alright, anything else? All those in favor? Oh, oh, we might need a motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Um, next, we had, uh, one come in for, remind me, for the Bucksport Golf Course, uh, for renewal of a liquor license. How would the council like to proceed? Motion approved?
Second.
Questions?
Any issues from public safety on that one?
No. All those in favor? Opposed? And finally, we have a seat empty pole permit on McDonald Street, how would the council like to proceed? Motion approved?
Second.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Alright, um, item thirteen is a question of items not on the agenda for the council and the public, uh, open it up to the public, anybody have anything that's not on the agenda that they'd like to talk about? Richard?
I'd first like to thank the town council for the donation towards Bay Festival. As Sue mentioned, there was a lot of people, but that event would not have happened without your support, so, from all of the. As Sue mentioned, there was a lot of people, but that event would not have happened without your support, so from all of the organizers, we all want to thank you. The town staff did come in every other Friday on their day off, and were here to help plan. The reason why it was so successful is everybody had a task, and it wasn't one person dictating, so it, everything went great, from the car show to the parade, to the dog walk, to all the free activities, so kudos and congratulations to the entire staff, and that goes to police, fire, public works, everyone in this office. You guys for supporting us, Sue for her support and volunteering as well, so thank you, thank you, thank you. I also would like to have a, um, finance meeting for the, I'll have to check, because we were gonna do it on the tenth, but the third, to talk about refinancing a micro loan that's due to expire in February of twenty twenty-four and is in serious delinquency.
Six thirty, early enough for that?
Uh, yep.
That's next Thursday.
Ye- yes, and if that doesn't work for the client due to me saying the tenth, I will get back to you, and then we'll have to look at the twenty-fourth, or whatever that next meeting is.
Okay. Yeah. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna commend Matt McGinnis, he did a good job, I was up at the tournament over the weekend, he did a good job, had a lot of kids, a lot of kids, it was a good event.
Nice. And I saw town orno is dealing with pool issues, so.
Yeah. There's a number of communities that are, but if you've noticed, ours, it hasn't lost any water, uh, other than splash, and it, it took, you, it's generally taken almost thirty hours to fill that pool, a little more than twenty-four, and, and this, since this, it took nineteen hours.
Is that showing how much your hemorrhage eaten the water?
No, I think there was a lot of things that went along, but, uh, um, Mr. Wardwell and his company did an exceptional job of, of being out, I don't know what the technical term is, all those cracks and filling them with liquid asphalt, and then it got a whole new paint job, which is a covering on its own, and the four fittings that were identified as cracked were all replaced, and then put back down in and, and paved and all that kind of stuff, and it has been, it, it's my understanding that the usage has been ramped up, the, since that, that time is, you know, we lost almost a month, but the fact that it's up and running and doing really well, um, I'm, I'm happy that it was, uh, and that nothing that we fixed this time was anything that was repaired at the time we did this four years ago, so.
Right. Perfect. Jake, that's all.
Yeah, just real quick, the nomination papers for two town council seats and two school board seats will be available from our office starting Monday. And they are due by the close of business on September seventh. And that if your Bay Festival t-shirts are the wrong size, come see us and we will exchange them for you.
Thank you.
On that note, I'd like to also commend Rich and everyone that, uh, participated in the Bay Festival. It's no secret I did not like, uh, Rich's financial structure when he initially pitched it to us, but, uh, he really did well, proved me wrong, and he really hit the ground running on the fundraising end. I spent most of the day there, and I saw a lot of familiar faces, and I saw a lot not so familiar, so I think the people of the town really were able to use it and enjoy it what we want, and it also brought a lot of people to town, so I, I think it was a major success.
Great.
I, I as well wanted to thank Rich for the job he did and not pointing out that Steve and I were not supporting his financials.
Well, the buyer said hi, obviously, for going forward, so.
And the numbers did work out good in the end, right, Rich? I mean, you really did fundraise a lot of money that really put a massive dent in what the town contributed to it.
We'll have final financials, uh, shortly for you.
Okay. All right, anybody else got anything? Rich, you have a guesstimate how many people were there, total? Ballpark?
I would, I would venture a yes, because I saw in drone footage at the peak, Dick Peterson posted it. If I were to freeze frame and count each person, I'd probably say somewhere between twenty-five hundred and three thousand people. I also have the. And I'm hoping that's on the low end, so what I said for those at home who couldn't hear me, um, there was a video footage, and I've shared that on, on the Bay Festival page, and if you pause it and you look and you count, it, potentially between twenty-five hundred and three thousand people throughout the day. And, and some of those people did come down from the tournaments, because I, like Mark, I went up and volunteered on Sunday at the basketball tournaments to help out Mark, and I noticed some of the kids that were in the kid zone. Um, but, um, yeah, I reached out to some of the business owners here on Main Street, but also at Verona Island, and, uh, Warren stayed open till nine. Traditionally, they close at two, and that's it, and that patio was full all night, and they served, it was a limited menu, but it was the best place to see the band from up above and drink what you would like to drink, right, because we didn't have a beer tent. Um, the Ice Cream Poller, if you didn't see the line, it's because half of it was up Central Street. Um, McLeod's, Friar's, Verona Wine Design had wait lists, I mean, my, my wife and Director Gagan's wife couldn't even get into any of those restaurants, they had to go to Glens, and actually sit at the bar, because there was no tables there either. Um, Andy Locker, uh, at Bookstacks, a generous donor of the Bay Festival, thanked us, in his words, a hundred times over. It was a great day. Um, I spoke to Katie Libby, um, who said she saw a lot of foot traffic. Uh, dollar wise, it wasn't much, but she saw people that she's never seen before. And on Verona Island, I spoke to Sweet Cheeks, and they said that they had normal traffic flow, but it seemed like it was a lot more different people than their normal people, because their normal people were probably with us, so. Um, from what I'm understanding, no one lost out on that day, and it was very important that, yes, we support the vendors, but in our post, we tagged the Main Street businesses as well and directed people there, so. Thank you for asking.
Very good. All right, uh, next is, uh, committee assignments, one move we have, uh, finance at six thirty. You're on the Economic Development, you said at some point?
That's on the fourteen.
Uh, August fourteenth.
Okay. Um, any other committees that we need to meet?
Oh, if we're not gonna meet on the tenth, what should we do about cemetery? Still holding? No, we're not gonna be here.
It's a real question.
Cemetery Committee, the first Thursday, but we're not gonna be meeting that day. You wanna cancel that?
Uh, the, the cemetery committee can still meet at four thirty, just, I mean, we, we have sort of coalesced them around to try and and have our IT people, you know, all in one place, we could, but there's no reason we can't keep that on the tenth.
All right, um, hearing nothing else, taking the German, Washington Jar.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you.